Okay, I'm gonna call the September thirteenth meeting of the Springdale School Board to order, and we're gonna jump into it. Well, thanks for everybody for being here. There's a few of you here, so thank you for being here. It's a beautiful day. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance first, and Hallie Luthard is gonna come lead that for us real quick, alright?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, you wanna go ahead and have her?
Yes, sir, that'd be great.
You betcha. Do you wanna read it?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, today's senior student representative is from Springdale High School. Her name is Hallie Luthard. She, her parents are Robin and Leon Luthard Senior. She has gone to Monitor Elementary, Sonora Elementary, Sonora Middle School, Lakeside Junior High, and Springdale High School. I've got, let's see, Lucy Luthard is a sister at Springdale High School. Maxwell Luthard is a brother at Sonora Middle School. AP classes that she's taken, AP World History. Her favorite class is her medical lab course because preparing herself for her future and getting certifications that allow her to be employed in the field of health right out of high school. Excellent. Extracurricular activities, she is student council president, student council president, Medical Academy, HOSA, and National Honor Society. As far as community service, she's done lots of work for the church, and she is a youth leader there, and does countless hours of volunteer work at Mercy Hospital. That's excellent. After graduation, she's planning to attend nursing school and graduate with her RN, and then proceed to get her nurse practitioner certification. And I'm gonna leave the career goal for her, so I'm gonna let you say a few words, and might include your goals and what's your, maybe going to school, that kinda stuff.
Okay. Hi, I'm Hallie. I just wanted to get to know you. Um, so after I graduate, sorry, after I graduate, I'm gonna go to the U of A. I applied, like, I think almost a little over a week ago for early decision. I'm gonna go to their nursing school band in December, so I'm in the Medical Academy. I don't know if you guys heard that. And so in December, I'll get my PCT, which is a Patient Care Technician Certification. And then I pretty much have a job waiting for me at either Washington Regional or Butterfield. It's like a residence thing in Fayetteville. And then I'm gonna get my RN, and then I'm gonna work as an RN while in practitioner school. And then I'll do two years of pediatric residency, and then I'll be a pediatric nurse practitioner.
Wow, awesome.
That's me.
Or does anybody have any questions?
So you'll be able to go to work immediately after your, what'd you say, your PC?
My Patient Care Technician, yeah. Yeah, we're, we have a shortage of them. And so through the program we do, is like, so Miss, do you guys know Ms. Pinkley? Ms. Robin Pinkley? So she has it set up for us, so as soon as we have it, like, she contacts people from HR, from hospitals around the area. And I've actually spoken to a couple from Washington Regional, and I do a lot of work at Mercy, so I know some of them. And they just are kinda waiting for us, 'cause there's a shortage of them.
Now, where will you go to get that certification?
So it's an online course, and we're doing it right now in our med lab class.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would you be like an ER tech?
No, not yet. Eventually. It's more just like helping out, like, with patients, like, a nurse assistant, kind of. It's like a glorified nurse assistant, but...
You're also very involved at football games and everything else, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
I saw somebody slithering around in the stands the other night.
Yes, I am, I...
What were you doing over there?
So I run the student section for our school. We just, Springdale used to be very involved, very enthusiastic, and COVID kinda hit us like a bus, I would say. And I'm just trying to get people involved again, so I kinda just act stupid and sometimes they laugh, so...
What I saw you doing was you were leading your classmates.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, yeah. That's awesome.
Yep, that's me.
Or does anybody else have any questions? Oh, we do appreciate you being here. Is any of your family here, or is it just you?
Oh, my Uncle Paul. And then my, my Lord and Savior, Mr. Jones.
You okay?
I really like, I really like that you're getting this training while you're still in school, and already knowing that you have employment opportunities. It's a pretty good story, right?
It's super helpful, too. And patient care technicians right now are going for like eighteen to nineteen dollars an hour. And so that's already like way over minimum, and I'm paying for my own college, so that'll be good for me.
That's great. Super glad for you.
Yeah.
We're glad you're here, and I've watched you work the student sections, and I appreciate all you're doing. That's, that's great. And I'm sure that Ms. Carroll does, too. So, anyway, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Great rest of the year. Okay, um, do we have any changes to our agenda? Yes, sir. Late on Friday, there was an agenda item request change. So if you don't mind, Mr. President, on number five, letter B, small number six, to add 404 Kansas Street along with 402, is that, if that's appropriate for the board? I'd like to add that. Anything else?
No, sir.
Does anybody else have any changes, or... Will I entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any questions about any of those items? Anything that we need to talk about, or?
I have one quick question, Mr. President. On the district transfers, what does it mean for record purposes only on that transfer?
Kendra's not here yet.
No, she's not here, okay.
But I don't know which student exactly. I do know that there were a couple that requested to transfer out of the district, rejected the two, but those were the only two that I saw that were different than the norm.
Gotcha, okay. I was just curious.
Want to, you know about the request for record purposes only?
I just didn't know what that meant.
I'm not sure either. Kendra will be back. Alright, anything else? Do I have a motion?
I want to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Bell, and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion about that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, now, um, next thing on our agenda is presentation by superintendent, but I'm going to preempt that, and I'm going to take a point of presidential privilege here real quick. Um, I, I've gotta come clean to, to Dr. Cleveland. Been lying to him for the last few days, and been, did been tell, have him tell him a few fibs to get to tonight, 'cause there's a really special thing that's fixing to happen. And, uh, Mr. Mike Hernan, or Dr. Mike Hernandez is here to make a special presentation to our superintendent.
Is it okay if I give a few minutes for our folks to...
Just please, let everybody in here. This is great.
Thank you.
We've done good. The board doesn't even know what's happening.
No idea.
It's just me. Is that everybody?
I think so.
Okay, floor is yours.
Alright, Board, or Board President Hutchinson, members of the board, we really appreciate you allowing us to crash your board meeting tonight. My name is Dr. Mike Hernandez. I'm the Executive Director of the Arkansas Association of Educational Administrators, also here representing the AASA Superintendent Group. And we're here to present a very special award for Superintendent of the Year. Uh, this award is, um, applications or nominations come out from the entire state. We've had many applicants, very high-quality applicants. A team of peers from across the state go through every application, may score those, and then select a winner. This application, the winner's application, will then go on into the national competition to compete against the top superintendents from across the country. And we feel very strongly about this application, and hope that they'll be in some high competition for that national award as well. If I may, I'd like to read at least one of the quotes that was given by one of the peers of Dr. Cleveland. It stated, "Jared Cleveland exemplifies every aspect of successful educational leadership. He is charged daily with leading the largest school district in the state, and does a phenomenal job of navigating difficult challenges that come with an organization of that size. Dr. Cleveland is innovative in his approach to education, which helps the students of Springdale. He is always trying to come up with new ideas that will improve the educational experience for his students. The Springdale School District is very diverse, with students from a variety of different ethnic backgrounds. Jared leads, leads a school district that embraces this diversity and celebrates many different cultures. He is constantly trying to motivate and develop leadership within its, his organization, and cultivate successful leaders in other districts as well. And all of this with the goal of improving academic achievement across the state." Dr. Cleveland's been one of the best superintendents in the state for a long time. And so tonight, we're here to recognize, we have a group of administrators, former Superintendent of the Year winners, superintendents that represent our AASA Board as well. And so we'd all like to present Dr. Jared Cleveland, 2023 Superintendent of the Year.
Interesting. So many liars in the room. Good ones, though, I appreciate. So I've been lying to him for the last week about having to have a really short board meeting, because I have some personal business to take care of after the meeting. So the personal business that we have to take care of after this meeting is we are gonna have a little reception after this is over, so that's why I had you trim all, everything down as, as much as we could. So everybody's invited upstairs after this is over. We do have a little bit of business to take care of. So thank y'all for being here. What do I do now, Skip? Remember you did this last year.
I'm good. It's all yours now. Take pictures, smile, enjoy the moment.
Thank you for being here. That's awesome.
Wow. I don't know that I ever really won anything, but I certainly didn't earn this.
Yeah, you did.
When you looked around the room.
Yeah, you did.
When I see the people behind me, and I look at all the people that are in Springdale, as principals and administrators, and see men like Benny Gooden, and I know I saw Tony Wood, Shawn back there, and Craig Murray, and I can name all of them. And others, or, and the youth, kinda feel the obligation to do the same. So I'm thankful for those men and women that are back there. Certainly thank the little ones on this side, 'cause most of them are my family. Do they lie, too? Anyway, no one ever wins anything or is honored alone. Not if they're truly leaders, and not if they're leaders that you wanna be like. Like all of you that are in the room that made such a long distance travel to be here tonight. So thank you, you all, for pouring into me years ago, Benny, and now Ida in Magazine, and Dr. Gooden at Fort Smith three years ago, when we saw him introduced as the new Superintendent of Magazine twenty years ago. Learned a lot. Continue to learn. One of the best things I've ever heard was from a lady I love, and her name is Sandra Smithson. She was the coordinator of the faculty. And the principals know this because I say it all the time, it's just a principle. If you're green, you're growing, and if you're right, you're right. And so the way I try to live my life is to stay green, to stay nimble, and not turn... The people around me every day, the leadership team, Dr. Smith, Ms. Tisher, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Perry, Jeremy, Dan, Paul, Trent Jones, somewhere wherever you are, they're the best people in the world. And Springdale has the best leadership team, best community, and certainly best board. So I thank you for entrusting me, and being not only my friend, but my, my reason to do this work. So thank you for providing kids with the resources. Thank you very much. I don't know what else to say. I'm sure after this evening's over, I'll think of all the things that you've been doing. So if I miss anyone, I apologize. But know that your time to me is so valuable that it will be your time. So thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Skip.
Thank you, everybody that put part of us, even the ones that lied to you.
Lives, love.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Don't know what's next.
We're gonna continue our board meeting. If you guys, if you guys wanna stay and watch the board meeting, you're welcome to. If you wanna go outside and hang out until we're done, it won't take us too long. Sure, you bet, yeah. Sorry. I tried. At least I called you the right thing. You look over this way a little bit so the screen isn't like behind all. Alright, we all in?
Yeah.
Great. Wanna real quick with your family?
Sure. Sure, my family. Thanks.
Now, when you're all superintendents. Sorry, I had to... They have everybody turn their shoulders towards them, and they get in a little closer, they like to spank them, or...
Nineteen ten. I told you nineteen eleven, I was a first graduate, pretty flat. Nineteen ten.
Alright, let's do a little bit of business real quick. We'll get on to some fun. So normally, this is the time when, uh, Dr. Cleveland would take over, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that for him, 'cause he's a little bit predisposed. So, first thing under presentation by superintendent is, is actually me. Uh, I have, hang on, let me find my form. As most of you know, I'm on the Arkansas School Board Association's Executive Board, and in December, I will be moving up to President-elect of the State Association. But I have to have y'all's permission, basically, to, to do that. So there needs to be a, um, a... Motion, thank you. See, I'm all out of sorts, too, with everything that's going on. There needs to be a motion to, I'm a liar, I know, I'm sorry. There needs to be, there needs to be a motion that will allow me to move forward as President-elect of ASBA. So if you guys would allow me to do that?
I make a motion to, um, allow Randy Hutchinson to move forward as ASBA President-elect.
Who's that? Kevin, okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Ollmey to allow me to carry on as President-elect of ASBA. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Well, thank you for allowing me to do that. Um, Wayne, you wanna come, come up and give us a athletics report, please?
Old-school, uh, high-tech stuff and old-school stuff. Hand out for everybody there, please. Good evening, board. Appreciate Dr. Cleveland inviting me to step in here and say a few words about athletics. Something that's kinda near and dear to, I, I hope, all of us here in the, in the room. Uh, but, uh, "Dreams to Memories" is our tagline in athletics. Those of you that are old enough recall an old TV show, Welcome Back Cotter. John Travolta's introduction to all of us. And as they sang that song, Welcome Back Cotter, the second line in there was, "Your dreams are your ticket out." And so we've kinda used dreams as part of our tagline for the last couple of years, because all of our kids have dreams. I've sat through hundreds of interviews with district administration, Ms. Tisher, Ms. Smith, and others, in which we've talked about how kids all have dreams. And it's our job is to help as coaches and teachers to fulfill these dreams. And if we do the job right, those memories become great memories. So it's taking dreams to memories. And so that's kind of our tagline in athletics here in Springdale. Our mission statement. Our mission statement is, we want to, in the, in the eyes of athletics, we wanna develop the entire person, the body, mind, and spirit. We wanna lift them up and prepare them for the next stage of life. Our vision statement is more about how you conduct yourselves, how you act. Our core values: lift, life, integrity, fun, and team. That's what we talk about with our coaches, how we can lift our kids up. People every once in a while say, "What do y'all do in athletics? Who are you, anyway?" Well, this past year, we had a hundred and eighty-four teams, seventh through twelfth grade. We had two hundred and eleven coaches. Most of those coaches are teacher coaches. They're teaching physics, they're teaching chemistry, they're teaching PE, they're teaching something. There's a handful of coaches who volunteer their time and services to help our kids out. There's always, always two or three that might be student teachers, but this past year, we had two hundred and eleven coaches. In the eleven schools that have athletics, we had over thirty-seven hundred student athletes that wore a jersey of some sort, one of those eleven schools. In those eleven schools, there were eleven, eleven thousand students, grade seven through twelve. So when you kinda do the math, a third of our students in the school, in the buildings that have seven to, seven through twelve athletics are wearing a uniform. They're connecting with the team, they're connecting with the school, they're connecting with our community. And it's our hope that this year, now that we have COVID behind us, our numbers will get better. We like that number, but we wanna improve that number as well. What do we do in athletics? Well, one of the things that our team will do is, this is next week's schedule for us. If you see things in yellow, that means it's a home event. And we're involved in that event in many capacities, many different ways. It's, it's visiting with, uh, school administrators, it's visiting with SROs, the ticket people, EMS possibly. Uh, it's doing things socially, online, to let the public know, to promote, enhance the teams. But we'll have involvement in all those events there that turn up in yellow. Typically, in a, in an average year, we'll have eight hundred events that we'll host. And we'll be hosting an event typically for about a hundred and seventy days in a year, from August one and through past graduation. Look at the next couple sheets. September. So in a typical month, that is what we'll be doing in our evenings, and sometimes on weekends. Dreams to Memories. Some great pictures of some great success stories that our kids have had this past year, whether it be individual, team. Different competitions, conference championship, state competition, state championships. Some really great stories of success that our kids have had. But we don't always measure success by the hardware that you might see. Success can be a coach who can take over a team, and when you watch them in maybe August, and you watch them play again in November, how much better they've gotten. They may not have won many games, but the kids stayed with them, the parents stayed with them, and they had success because they kept kids out. One of our great stories, a few years ago, we had a team in the fall that went, I think, 1-9. They had 50 kids out in the team. The next year, they went 6-4 and had close to 70 kids out. So again, a coach who connected and engaged kids with the team. Dreams to Memories. It's what we try to do, and in Springdale, we've been producing winners since 1910. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Cleveland, I'm gonna hand it back off to you now. Okay.
Yes, sir.
For C. For C.
For C.
Yes, sir.
Still kind of hard to focus.
Would you like me to continue?
No.
Okay.
Workforce education report. We have Mr. Rodney Ellis and Ms. Kelly Williamson here. I don't know who else, okay. What we really wanted to do is just give you an update on the work that both of them have been doing in our, in our district, and building relationships with our business and industry partners. So it's just gonna take a couple minutes to give you an update.
Sure.
So, good evening, Board, and congratulations on your award. So we just wanted to give you a quick update about our workforce progress. And I thought you heard a very good testimony from the young lady this morning. Big proponent of earn while you learn, which is part of what we're trying to target. So currently, we're working on several areas. We're developing curriculum to go down into the elementary level to start exposing students and parents to the opportunities that are not only in the technical field, but the medical field, the robotics, the automation field. Also, we're bringing those elements into a medium that we will call Parent University. That's something that we're developing. And we're also working on creating pathways for our students out of all of our CTE programs. We have a large group of excellent CTE teachers that we're working on planning and, and training them to upskill them in some areas that are needed. That also ties into the workforce piece of how we align the workforce curriculum with what's needed in education. So sometimes there's some gaps in those areas, and that's an overall reaching goal that we're looking at implementing over the next year to two years. And that will be an overarching goal that we continually have to do as we have turnover in CTE. Another piece of this is we're continually working towards apprenticeship, pre-apprenticeship curriculum. We've been approached by an apprenticeship school out of Little Rock who I've worked with in my former capacity, a lot of incumbent worker training. We have an opportunity to work with them to place an apprenticeship, possibly at Harbor in an after-school program, and also Archer or SHS in an after-school program. That'll give our students some basic skills foundations to launch them into the workforce. As we do these programs, we're also always looking at articulating credit and concurrent credit that we can tie into NWAAC or University of Arkansas at Fort Smith, or NAC at North Ark and Harrison, or the U of A, and NWTI as a partner. So we have several of these programs that are currently in place. We have an Archer group that's currently attending NWTI that's getting a basic foundational set that could launch them into an industrial maintenance or ammonia, an automotive program. And as we do these things, you hear me speak a lot to the technical side. We're also looking from a business standpoint and a medical standpoint. We're pulling in hospitals as partners into this. We have some great partnerships currently, but we're looking how we can enhance them. An instance of this would be in a hospital setting. Most people just think of that as a nurse or a doctor. But there's a whole facet to all the side of being a medical transcriptionist, to be in a medical translator. We have a lot of bilingual students who have opportunities to enter the workforce through a certificate program. The maintenance side of that house, the automation side of that house, the lab side of that house. So even the bed linen, which you don't think about. They have a quality assurance program that will check bed linens in the hospital settings. So those are pathways for our students. And we're continually developing those. We're pulling in new industry partners. Another way that we'll do this is October 13th, which we will send you an invite and an invitation. We're gonna have our second annual industry day at Don Tyson School of Innovation for all of our schools. That will allow all of our students from junior high up to come see all the different technical aspects from a skilled trades perspective, to an automation perspective, to a heavy equipment perspective. So they will see a lot of hands-on skill sets in demonstration format that they'll get to participate in. We think that will generate industry, industry interest in these fields. And we're continually finding partners who are going to be willing and are coming in to train our different sectors. And we've had some phenomenal, phenomenal success with our audiovisual and technical production sides from Trent Jones' side of the house. Some of the partnerships there are gonna come in and do some custom training for our instructors. We're also gonna do this from automation standpoint, from some of our integrator partnerships. Caterpillar, Riggs Caterpillar out of Little Rock is gonna do some custom training for our students and our instructors alike. So we're continually developing this plan that will not only upskill our instructors. Our students see that, they make basically a relationship that ties along with our industry partners, but it also creates for them custom training that our subject matter experts bring to them. So across all of our CTE programs, we will continue to implement that. That will allow our students, as we deep, go a little bit deeper and earlier in the curriculum, to try to work towards segments where we have a higher-level skill set as they enter 10th grade, and by the time they're 11th and 12th grade, we have more opportunities for them as seniors to enter into the workforce. So these are some overarching goals that we're implementing as we move through this. And Ms. Williamson is gonna highlight one of our recent recipients. We had two high schools that received the JAG 5-on-5 award, so I'll let her explain that. And if you have any questions at the end, you can ask us.
Or you can ask now. Anybody have any questions for Rodney? That was a lot of information.
Alright, they told me I had two minutes.
No, you did good, you did good. He's coloring within the lines.
I can just tell you how hard these two are working. It's unbelievable. They start way before the sun comes up and typically don't stop even at night. So I have to tell you, I'm very proud of their work. And I'm very proud of them. We all should be very grateful they're here doing it because our kids' lives are gonna be changed.
So I have a broad question, but I'll let you finish.
Cliffhanger, you're up, Kelly.
Okay, so JAG is short for Jobs for Arkansas Graduates, which is also Jobs for America Graduates. And we have this program at Harbor High and at Springdale High. We have two teachers at Harbor, I'm sorry, we have two teachers at Springdale High, April Reed and Karma Weiss. And we had Mark Taylor retire this year from Harbor High School, and now Drew Samuelson is over that program as of this year. And if you look at, or I don't know if you can see the link on 3B of the agenda, we were recognized, these two schools, for what's called a 5-of-5 award. Now, this program is to help, excuse me, students that are at risk of graduating. They are provided year-long support, even after they graduate. Support on, you know, that's the hardest time in many cases for a student that's at risk that may not be like the young lady that spoke to us this, you know, I said this morning, like you did, when they opened because, for whatever reason, okay? And so we are really proud of these schools. For the last 15 years, Arkansas has won the 5-of-5 award. You can see the graduation rate for those students in JAG is above, we're 97% in Arkansas. Graduation rate nationally is 90 for those students in JAG. This is an outstanding program. And we are looking to have as many students as possible have jobs. We want that real-world experience like the young lady spoke about. It's really important. They don't know what they don't know. Their teachers don't know what they don't know. Your business and industries that you all work in, there's careers within those that our teachers and our students are unaware of. And so to have that opportunity is really priceless. So this is a proven success story, and we want to continue this. We do have an internship program that is also like this JAG program. And we're just really excited for these teachers and this work that they're doing because it's really where the rubber hits the road. It really is. It's just, many of you were at the presentation where we had many dignitaries from the state come in and recognize these teachers' work. And the students that spoke were, were just amazing. They were very articulate, they were very much in charge of what their future looked like. And it's because of the work that these teachers do. So you can see with the 5-of-5, we've got placement rate, the full-time employment, the positive outcomes, which is huge, and the further education rate. So whether they're going into military, or post-secondary, or continuing to work, they can be successful. So we're just thankful for this program and hope that we can provide these same services to all of our students. So now you can ask your question.
So where does, where does FFA fit in the CTE?
Okay, so FFA is a career technical student organization. Every CTE program of study is required to have one. So for business, it's FBLA or DECA, distributed education clubs. FFA is the ag piece of it. HOSA is the health occupation side of it, so they've all got one with acronyms.
So it's rolled in there, right?
It is part of the curriculum that they do, yes. It absolutely is.
Because I, I think at one time, we had some way broad discussions about, you know, enhancing the FFA piece of it even to the, to the degree of even having some chicken houses at some point in time. There's stuff to learn animal husbandry, or hatchery management, nutrition, things of that nature, being as we're in the...
Right, we really want these programs to represent our business and industry in our local region. And so we're looking at where is the business and industry and where are these students able to work. And he was an ag teacher and an FFA advisor, so I'm gonna let you take that over.
So you got a couple pathways, that's a good handoff. Couple pathways, animal science, poultry science. And yeah, you're right, we're in the Mecca of that. So FFA, the CTSO is a small portion. And then you have the broad range of the program that all of those can fit into. And I believe you might be referring to, I don't know, I'm guessing on some initial conversations when DTSOI was built, the land, the farm. So I was in on some of that planning, but that's a piece. But we're working, I'll give you an example. We've met with Cargill. I'll be meeting with some of the Tyson Live Production people. So there's, there's some pathways there that we have opportunities for that animal science path, or that poultry science pathway, to bring them in from a pharmaceutical standpoint, from a field rep standpoint. Or it could be in a husbandry aspect if they want to become a contract farmer. So there's plenty of ways to fit...
And I know we have good opportunities with the U of A because they have a lot of those facilities in small scale. Feet mill, small hatchery, and barns and all that. I get all that, but I envision that sometime in the future that we could have some kind of that same technology on our campuses here at some point in time.
And as we move forward, you know, we don't really think of that in agriculture, but automation is a huge part of that. You know, coming from where you came from, how...
Yeah, there's a lot of job opportunities, in my opinion. And looking at, at the meat industry in total, in automation, in even sales, manufacturing, scales, robotics, all that stuff.
And the support side of that, from reliable poultry to whomever fills in that blank. Plus, from an owner's standpoint, or a business sector, you know, an operations side of it. There's plenty of pathways through animal science, poultry science, and FFA.
Thank you.
Alright.
Any other questions?
Thank you all. Board, we have an opportunity tomorrow to have a back-to-school bash. Trent, you wanna talk about it real quick, or do you want me to talk about it?
Looks like he wants to talk about it. He can do it, I bet, in 30 seconds, if we time it.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Jared Cleveland. Congratulations. Well done, Board President, that was very nice. It always makes my job a good job when I get to celebrate great news, and that is certainly great news. We'd love to have everybody come out tomorrow night to Northwest Arkansas Naturals RVS Ballpark for the fourth annual back-to-school rally. It's gonna be a great night. Doors at 5, pre-game at 6, ballgame at 7:05. First 10,000 tickets are free. We'll have 40 booths, live student performances. We're gonna, everybody gets one free train ride, that's exciting. There's $1.50 barbecue sliders, so that's exciting as well. And then, of course, Kansas City Royals AA affiliate, Northwest Arkansas Naturals will be playing. Parking is free. When you pull in, make sure you just say you're with the Springdale Public Schools. And I do want to give a shout-out to our communications team. They've worked very, very hard. Leslie Roscoe made these graphics that you see here. Marty Beltapia, Rosanna Anatok have translated it and created content in multiple languages. Luis and Omar made some awesome commercials. We just welcomed a new Assistant Communication Director, John Steele-Cooper. His first day on the job, I said, "Welcome to Springdale Schools Communications Office. You're gonna run a 10,000-person event." And he has done a masterful job. So we're very proud of our team. Dustin Mapes, our webmaster, built a webpage. So anyway, you guys have a great opportunity to come out and celebrate. It's gonna be the best of the best, and we hope everybody will be there. Do you have any questions for me? I went over 30 seconds, but it was worth it to say congratulations, sir. Thank you all, appreciate you.
Mr. Don Nelson's gonna be up here for a couple. Mr. President, we'll talk about our free and reduced lunch meal application effort along with the CTSO.
Good afternoon, Board, and Dr. Cleveland. Congratulations, that's amazing and well-deserved. Tonight, if you can go to that next slide, one more. I just want to talk about, I want to give a big shout-out to our Springdale family first and foremost, and just tell you who that is, that's students, parents, principals, assistant principals, front office staff, social workers, counselors, nurses, teachers, instructional assistants, child nutrition, Gina Smith, just really rocking it there. And then cafeteria workers and bus drivers. And the things that we've done are open house. I haven't included parent-teacher conferences up there, but that'll be next week for some schools, paper applications, electronic applications, giveaways, social media, morning announcements, home visits, lots and lots and lots of home visits with social workers and counselors, phone calls, texts, emails, advisory. That's where kids are in small groups in schools, and we have that pushing into advisory as well. School status, Thrill Share, Seesaw, and radio. Okay, so special thanks to all those who have really helped us push this forward. The next slide would be Trent Jones and his team have done a phenomenal job getting the message out and helping get it out. I've just included some of the flyers that they've produced and put out on all of our social media pages. It's really helped educate our families about, you know, it's time. Like, we have to get this done before October 1st. And if you'll go to the next one too. Does this work? I can just slide it. Okay, it does work, okay. And I'm happy to tell you today, we hit 60% today. So we started tracking numbers on 8:30, and as of today, we've grown 12 percentage points, which is about 2,650 kids, okay? So we've still got another 10% to go, which is about, you know, another 2,000 kids, 2,200 kids. And with this team that we have, we can do it. I believe that we can do it. I see these principals back here working hard. I sent Jason Jones a text this weekend and just said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you for the work that your team's doing," because he's had amazing growth back there at SHS. And I believe that we can do it. I also want to thank the Springdale Education Foundation for providing the gift cards that we're giving away. I think we had about 15 parents pick up gift cards today. We just did a random draw. And it wasn't if you qualified for free and reduced lunch. It was just simply, did you turn in an application? And if you qualified or not, that entered you into the contest. We'll also give away another 31 $50 gift cards again from Harps Food. And we'll give those again away on this Friday as well. And, and then the next Friday, we're gonna give another grill away to a school. So we gave two grills away, one to Smith Elementary and one to George Junior High for having the biggest gain in percentages. And then we'll give another school away next, not this coming Friday, or not this Friday, but the next Friday. And I want to say thank you to Walmart. They provided all of those grills as a donation to Treehouse Pantry. And we said, "What can we do with these? grills as a donation to Treehouse Pantry. And we said, "What can we do with these?" We can provide them as incentives for free and reduced lunch. And we've done that. So 60%. The goal is, what is it, in the whole room?
70%.
70%. We've gotta get 70% by the October 1st. Okay? All right. Next slide. Commissioned school security officers. So I want to say that it has been a journey. I want to thank Sergeant Trent back here and also Mr. Johnson for the support that they've given. They've sat through probably 22 interviews. And from that, you can go to the next one. I keep forgetting I have this. I apologize. Let's see if I can make it work. It's not working. This is a timeline of what has happened. But before I go to that timeline, I do want to say just a couple of things. We've sat through 21 interviews, and from those 21 interviews, we've identified 11 applicants who are really, really great candidates for this position. Between those 11 applicants, there's about 104 years' worth of military, police, fire, security. I wrote a bunch of stuff down here. Let's see. I'm forgetting something. CSO, CSSO experience. So between all of those 11 applicants, about 104 years of experience in there. So this is not just people. Now, there are some with little bits of experience, but there are some with lots of experience. So we're very proud of the applicants that we have so far. And if you'll notice on that, on the board there, this week, they'll be completing paperwork and sizing for uniform and equipment. Next week, they'll be doing background checks. Actually, they'll probably be doing background checks this week. And then as soon as they apply for their, remember what this is, CDL job as well, they're gonna get their DOT drug screening. So that will take care of the drug screening. And then the 19th and 20th, they'll have all day, those days, to come here, right in this room, and take their psychological exam that we will then collect and send that off and have it scored. And then on 9/26, that's the last week of this month, it's six days of training, 10 hours a day, 10 hours per day. They'll have a training with Lieutenant Scott Lewis from the Springdale PD, and his company is called School Training Services LLC. And just to remind you, that was established through an RFQ that we sent out, and his company came back with the best affordable price, with the best training that we could get our CSSOs. So I said all that to say, on 10/3 through 10/7, we should be placing some fully-commissioned CSSOs in elementary schools. And I put 17 elementaries there because Rollins already has an SRO from Tawny Town. So we're not gonna be placing one there. But then we'll be doing the other 17 elementaries plus pre-K in some capacity. Okay? And then one more slide here. And here is a look at some of the uniform pieces that we have. If you'll back up a couple of slides where it says "School Commissioned Security Officers," that seal right there will be on the, either on the left-hand side patch, and then you can go back to the uniforms. And then it'll be on there, and then on the back, it'll say "School Security" on the back. Any questions that you have? I know that was kind of brief, but...
You all okay with the uniforms and how they look?
We wanted the uniforms, we've talked to Officer Trent, our great partner back here, about how we want them to look. We want them to be super visible. So we want people to see when you're, when the CSSOs walk around, we want that person to be visible. Because we want, we know what that will do as a culture of safety and security in our buildings. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland.
Good evening, Board. Congratulations, Dr. Cleveland. Well deserved.
Board, I have several items for you this evening. The first item is the budget for the 22-23 school year. You will notice that, I don't want to read all of it to you. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it. But I don't have a lot of new revenues budgeted. I was pretty conservative on our local property taxes. I'm hoping they'll come in heavier than what I've budgeted, and I anticipate them doing so. And then because of our drop in student enrollment over the last couple of years, our foundation aid is not really increasing, even though there has been an increase per student in foundation aid. Because we have fewer kids, it's not really adding up to more money for us. Now, you would notice that we had some declining enrollment funding. We have actually, from what we can tell, grown this school year. Declining enrollment is based on last year. Student growth funding is based on the current year. And so the last time we checked, we were up 140. I'm wondering if it'll settle down to more like 100 or so. But we either receive the declining enrollment or the student growth, whichever's higher. So I anticipate us receiving student growth money this year, then that would be higher, from what I can tell. Overall, I do project an increase in expenditures. That is pretty typical in every budget I've presented to you guys. It always shows pretty significant increase in expenditures, relatively flat revenue. I'm pretty consistent in this. So I feel really good about it. Our debt payment is going up from $12 million to $13 million starting this year, and that will be where it will be basically every year from now on. And we were anticipating this increase. So once again, I could go on and on. Our federal grants, I anticipate they're gonna go down slightly. That's mainly, that's because of the spend down in our ESAR dollars, which are non-recurring dollars. And so that's the reason for the drop there. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them for you. Oh, the other thing is, as Mr. Donnell was just talking about, this year, we're back to, if you do not qualify for free and reduced meals, you are required to pay for your meals this year for our students. And so that's why the Fund 8 looks a little different. We are gonna be receiving less federal funds because we were paid for all of our students that ate last year. And this year, our money from our paid students will be coming in, and we will not receive as much from the federal government because of that. Do you have any questions for me?
We need a motion to accept the budget.
Please.
Okay. Board, is there any questions from anybody about any aspect of the budget?
If not, I'll make a motion to approve the 22-23 proposed budget.
We have a motion by Mr. Emerson and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the 2022-2023 proposed budget. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There you go.
Board, the next item that I have for you this evening are the incentives to be paid to all employees if approved by the Board from ARP ESAR funds. This recommendation is put before you this evening directly as a result of the recommendations made to all districts in our state from the Arkansas Legislative Council. The Arkansas Legislative Council recommended that school districts pay a $5,000 incentive to certified staff and $2,500 incentive to classified staff. As you are aware, our district, because of the ESAR funds that have helped us over the last couple of years, we were able to provide three different previous incentives totaling $2,600. So the proposal in front of you this evening is to provide the remaining $2,400. We are proposing that for all of our employees, both classified and certified, that it would be consistent with what we have done with the previous three incentives totaling $2,600. So we would ask that you consider that. Yes, that's correct. This is a recruitment and retention incentive. So in order to encourage retention even through this school year, we are proposing that half of it be paid in November and the second half be paid in May.
Did you say November or December?
November. We wanted to get it in time for Christmas.
Board, does anybody have any questions about the recruitment and retention incentives? If not...
I'll make to approve the recruitment and retention proposal.
We have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. OMB to approve the recruitment and retention incentives as discussed. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item I have for you is the additional bus driver recruitment and retention proposal. As you all are aware, it's no secret, we have been struggling to fill our bus driver positions. As a result, we have fewer bus routes that are being run today than we have had in the last several years. So this is to encourage folks that maybe have not considered driving a bus to do that. I am pleased to report, I think we have seven people that are in, that have come forward and are being trained to be bus drivers. So I can't say that this hurt that. I think it helped it, as a matter of fact. And so, anyway, we would ask that the Board consider this incentive for our bus drivers.
I'll make a motion to approve the recruitment and retention incentive for bus drivers.
We have a motion by Mr. Emerson and a second by Mrs. Creek to accept the recruitment and retention incentive for bus drivers. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay?
If I...
I have a question.
Sure.
So is that seven in addition to our CSSOs? That we're training the seven?
Yes, yes. Yes, we haven't started training the CSSOs yet.
Some of our CSSO candidates already have received...
Oh, no, that's true. Yeah. We do already have one driving for us. Yeah. Let's talk about the next two, if we could, together. The bus driver salary schedule and the commissioned school security officer salary schedule. You have both of those items in your information tonight. For the last, well, since ESAR, I guess, we have been paying a $20 daily incentive attendance to our bus drivers from ESAR funds. That's a great thing, but it's also created some issues for us in that when folks go to look at our bus driver salary schedule on our website, it's a little lower than the other districts. We make up for it with the attendance incentive, but people don't really see that. So we are asking that we discontinue the attendance incentive that we pay on a daily basis and instead actually put that in the salary schedule itself so that when folks look at our salary schedule, it's more favorable and more comparable to other districts. In addition, we were, we are asking that we extend the steps slightly. Once again, not adding any more steps, but just putting the gaps a little bit larger to encourage those that we have that are experienced bus drivers to stay with us. And then in addition, since we've never had commissioned school security officers, we had to develop a salary schedule for them, and it was included in your information. And so because we're changing policy in the middle of the year, we had to ask our staff members to approve this by vote, and it was approved by 98.5% rate. So...
So how did you come up with this schedule?
For which one?
For the commissioned school.
We looked at other school districts to see what they were paying, and we did it that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Because some other school districts do have that program. Yeah.
Looks low.
Oh, it looks low?
To me. That's me.
Okay. Well, we're getting some candidates that have, you know, even from other districts that are paying, doing the same work in other districts.
Yeah. So you have decent applicant flow.
We do. We do.
Just like the other thing, they're just doing overtime.
Yeah.
Just needed to place...
I'm just saying, just from knowing what their ultimate responsibility is at this caliber.
I understand. Right. Understood.
I get it. I'm asking, right between the lines.
Yeah.
All right, Board, is there any other questions about either one of those items, item 3 or item 4? I think we need a motion on those two. Can we combine them into one?
That'd be fine with me.
I make a motion that we accept the bus driver salary schedule as revised, as presented, and the CSSO salary schedule as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. OMB to approve the bus driver salary schedule, the rise to bus driver salary schedule, as well as the CSSO salary schedule. Is there any other discussion about either one of those? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay?
Okay, Board. The next item I have for you are the August financials. Once again, just to remind you guys, the federal programs looks odd, which we always are running in the red on federal programs throughout the year because it's a reimbursing program. We have to spend the funds, and then the state reimburses us. Even though it's federal, it comes from the state. So we always have a negative balance going forward every month. So that's why that looks a little odd. Our overall revenue is down slightly from this time last year, and our overall expenses are up slightly, which is not a good trend in either one of those. But it's early in the year, so I've got plenty of time to get that straightened out. I'm not worried. I hope you aren't either. You have any questions for me?
I'll make a motion to approve the August financials as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Emerson and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the August 2022 financial statements. Is there any further discussion about those? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item I have for you are property located at 402 North Kansas and 404 North Kansas. This is property that is contiguous to property we already own by Springdale High School. And we feel like it's in the best interest to provide, it would provide us additional green space on that campus. We think it would be in our best interest to purchase this.
And according to Dr. Cleveland, 404 is occupied?
It is.
So who's your middle landlord?
Well, I guess we will be.
Unless you think it would be a good idea to maybe have our company that manages that property.
I don't think it's worth it. You might be wanting to hire somebody.
It's 11 months, it's 11 months left on the lease.
No, we'll make Jeremy do it. No, I'll make Jeremy do it.
Jeremy, you just became a landlord.
No, no, no. I think it's, I think it's a good gesture to whoever's occupied to stay there until we need it, you know? And if you generate about $1,000 a month back to the district, kind of take off its price.
Even beyond the 11 months, you know, maybe we go to a month-to-month thing or something after that.
After that, sure.
The way I understand it from Mr. Brothers is the tenants are very good, very clean, and the house is really good.
So I would ask that the Board approve a resolution authorizing us to make these purchases.
Need to purchase the two properties, estate at 402 and 404 North Kansas Street, as proposed?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. OMB and a second by Mr. Emerson to purchase the properties at 402 and 404 North Kansas Street. Is there any other discussion about those, either of those properties? If not, all those in favor of purchasing those, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Now Mr. Jeremy White.
Mr. Jeremy.
Hello, Board. Congratulations, Dr. Cleveland. I've got a few photos today that doesn't really do justice to what progress they've made. A lot of this is still in the infrastructure mode, so a lot of it's still underground. At Southwest, they've got, the picture on the left is actually out by the press box. That's the start of the footings for the school. And then in the background, behind that light pole, is actually, they're getting ready to pour the slab for the, for the indoor weight room. And then on the right is actually, that's between the original building and the gym. They're having to excavate in there, and it's having to go slow because that's where all the utilities are at. So they're having to take their time in that area. This is still at Southwest, so they've got a lot of the storm drains put in. They're still working on... They're still working on storm drains over there. Once they get that in, then they're doing the undercut and putting in the red dirt, compacting it in, getting ready to start putting footings in for the actual building. That is actually on the south side of the football field. And that's, they're forming up for the slab for that indoor weight room. So at Springdale High School, I don't know if any of you have been by there. They've got the red dirt. They've got everything undercut. Red dirt's going back in. They've got the elevation set. It's going to be quite a bit higher than the other building was. And they're actually putting in electrical conduits and everything, getting ready to start pouring footings and piers in there. So this photo, they've laid out the grid. So that's where all the piers will go for the main structure of those buildings. And then they've started actually digging some of those piers, getting ready to pour those. That's just more they've dug out to get ready to start pouring footings. So once these footings go in, they'll actually start laying the block to that building before any of the slab's done. So once the footings are done, they'll start putting up the walls. And those walls are about 46 feet tall. So we should start seeing some progress soon as the footings are done. At Central, they got the demolition all done between the buildings. So on that left picture, the building to your left, that is the newer weight rooms that were on, that were attached to the mini-gym. So we had to demo between. They got the power and everything back up and running today to those locker rooms because we need to keep the temperature right for the plumbing and all the interior. So those are all waterproofed in. They are getting ready to start excavating out the dirt between the two buildings and doing the undercut and putting in the footings, the red dirt, and get ready for footings. So this is on the south side of Central. They've got all that, it has been undercut and all the red dirt's rolled in. We are working on the retention pond area. That'll be the next step on the dirt contractor for Central. That's just another view of between the existing buildings. And like I said, they're getting ready to excavate the dirt there. Okay. So that's all the pictures I had. But like I said, they've done a lot of infrastructure that's not seen in the pictures. We have run into several issues, you know, at each site, just underground services that nobody knew was there. So we've been just dealing with those as they arise.
Did you ever figure out what the brick wall was at Springdale Bay on Doggo?
No, not. We're assuming it was the original flat building that burnt. It was part of that building. They did get it all removed. And we had to undercut deeper on that area. And then today, they run into some clay, some like gray clay that we're having to undercut two feet deeper than we anticipated over at Springdale High back on the west side. So we're just working through the issues as they come up. Do you guys have any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Here's our SEA rep here. Yes, she is right there. Come on up.
We got here just in time.
You did. Good timing.
Yeah, we were actually just having our first monthly meeting of the year. So it ran a little longer because those first meetings always are. I want to start out by saying congratulations to Dr. Cleveland. We just saw the post come up, Superintendent of the Year. I am very proud.
It's urban legend already, isn't it?
So we, like I said, we had just finished our first meeting of the year. A lot of, you know, I think are good news for the year. Most of the teachers that were there, there was a lot of happy vibes, which, you know, is not, is not quite how last year was feeling. At the end of the year, we were all kind of on that, like, what's going to change? What's going to be different? And it really, it is a happier feeling. And I can say that for my own self. And oh, by the way, I'm Valerie Hannah, and I'm now the Secretary of the SEA for us. But I just feel that there's been an upbeat in morale within the buildings and within the teachers. As always, there's still concerns and such, but that's for another time. The other thing I thought I would tell you guys, Sherry Penalto, who is our classified Board Member, has been nominated as ESP of the Year for the Arkansas Education Association. So in November, when we have our representative's conference, hopefully, she will win that. And because I think for sure, she has been such a great advocate for our classified staff in the district, and we're so proud of her. So we really want, we want to see her do well. So hopefully, if, you know, if all goes well, we'll have something to celebrate in November for her. I'm looking to see. I think that was pretty much all we had for today.
So what do you have in meetings?
What do we have?
Where do you have your meetings?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Where do you have your meetings here locally?
Oh, we actually have, AEA has an office that's like almost directly across the street, that the blue accountant's office. Like, there's a building right behind that where we have, Renee Johnson has her office there. And so that's where we meet occasionally. We go out to places like Black Apple and support businesses in Springdale for, you know, like our Christmas parties and stuff like that. Trying to see, Ms. Corey, our President, just sent me a little thing real quick. Oh, and we also wanted to say that we did get the opportunity to open up our office and donate supplies to several new teachers this month. And that's still something that if there's teachers within this district that are needing some things, just general office supplies and stuff for them, that they can absolutely, you know, get in contact with us. And I think that's all. So happy new school year.
Thanks for being here. All right, Beth, that brings us to the patron comments. And we do have one gentleman here, Scott Griffith.
Yes.
If you'd like to...
Hold on, I'm back.
Come on up.
Actually, not everything is bad. I would like to say that Parson Hills, my special needs daughter, she loves him. She comes home every day. She can say her ABCs, count to 10, she has not fell asleep. She's not cried one time getting on the bus. Mrs. Murray needs to be complimented. She has done an outstanding job with her. And she has, and hands down, she's, that's, dad is outstanding compared to what was last year, where the kid ran out of school twice, come home fair. This is amazing. And they really need to be complimented, Parson Hills. This next thing, not so much me, my wife said I had to bring it up, so I'm going to bring it up. Bus drivers, I feel sorry for them, I really do. But they really shouldn't tell kids that they don't sit down and shut up, even going to take them back to school and not take them home. It's just bad technique. I said I'd bring it up, and it is. The one thing that does bother me, I talked to Kevin about this. My daughters, my three children that I have custody of, didn't come home all night. After about 30 minutes, okay, my wife called. She called the bus terminal. The bus terminal, the transportation department said, "The school put them on the wrong bus." Well, that don't sound right. It really didn't. So I called the school. And I said, "Did you put my children on the wrong bus?" "No, we didn't. We put them on the wrong bus. The new bus driver, he got lost." "Okay, I'm happy with that. You know, he's not going to run off like kids. I can guarantee you he'll bring them home as soon as he can." What bothered me was the transportation department lady lied to me on the phone. She knew the bus, the school didn't put the children on the wrong bus. And she lied to me. And as I told Kevin that day, I don't mind the kids being late. I don't, new bus drivers, I drove a bus. I understand. What bothers me is she will stretch the truth on that when it's nothing important. What will she do when she has something really important? That's what bothered me on that. And we'll go back to the early release. You cost your children one week of schooling a year by releasing her one hour early every Wednesday. One week a year? Them kids get deprived of schooling. And also, if you add this up, the average daycare in Springdale is about $10.58 an hour. If you do that with 22,000 students, that's about $215,000 a week it costs parents. Now, not every parent has to do that. But let's say a fourth of those do. That's almost $50,000 a week you're charging parents for daycare or leaving work early. Now, do you really think that's necessary? And we're cheating our children. We're depriving our children one week a year of schooling. Just something to think about. That's a week they don't get taught. The last thing, and I know I run over to that, the last thing, and I appreciate the police doing the SSO. I'm all for that. I really do. I worked as security. I worked as nuclear security. I worked as an MP. The only thing I asked in this last conference, last time I was up here, a comment was made that the SSOs could also enforce school policies, you know, taking your hat off and all that. The one thing I caution this is when I worked security, one thing we did not do with any of our security, they didn't do anything but security. Because once you add the extra task to those people, it takes their focus away from what they're paid to do, and that'd be security. So before we say, hey, you can enforce school policies, you need to really think about that. You don't want to deviate from what their job is, which is security. And thank you. And again, Parson Hills, great job. Parson Hills, great job.
All right, is there anything else, Dr. Cleveland? Yes, sir. Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. And everybody, go upstairs. There's a celebration up there, I think.